Hello?
Hello, Mr. Manini, this is Titus, are you ready to start the meeting?
Alrighty, thank you for calling me, Mr. Nez, appreciate it, yes, I'm ready.
Good evening, sorry for the short delay, as you know we had a little incident in the back. And I hope we can speed this meeting through this evening due to the road conditions and still a chance of snow this evening. So, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and New Mexico pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, and there is no other religion or justice for all. As a reply, state of New Mexico, to the deal signal, working relationship, and all the kind of causes.
Thank you, roll call.
Titus Nez?
Here.
Kevin Mitchell?
Here.
Priscilla Manuelito? Excuse me? Joe Manini?
Present.
Lynn Hineman?
Here.
Thank you, we'll continue on now to the approval of the agenda, board members, this is before you.
Uh, Mr. Nez?
Uh, Mr. Manini?
Yes, uh, on the agenda is that to, uh, for travel, it does not give us or the superintendent consent to travel to the, uh, annual conference in October on December 4th or 5th.
It's already been done?
Um, it already has been done back in October, I believe it's been a year.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm just following up on what I see in my head.
Okay, board with that, we do have the agenda before you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hineman?
Please comment just that I expect that this week we will have the third report on from the shepherds, TB shepherds, and that's not on here, but we'll have opportunity under item 9, future board items to catch up with them.
Yeah, we can update at a time with all the upcoming agenda items. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Also need?
A move by Mr. Hineman to approve the agenda, roll call please.
Mr. Manini?
Yes?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Thank you, we do have public comment this evening, we'll go ahead and start with Doris Spinalli.
Good evening, board members, audience, standing room only. Everyone's so serious. Uh, my name is Doris Spinalli, I'm from Tohachi. I'm a concerned grandparent of my children attending schools here within McKinley County Schools. Just for your information, I'm a civil service retiree. I just want to share this information with the board. Tohachi Elementary School made AYP three consecutive years, a few years ago. And at the time, before they made AYP, we had a principal there in Tohachi named Carmen Moffip. She was our principal for three years. In the fall, she left for a promotion here in Gallup. And then, uh, within that year, Tohachi made AYP. Tohachi done this, we done this, as parents, teachers. I just want to share this with our new superintendent, with Mr. Chappetti. We didn't get University of Virginia to come and help us. Two years ago, Mr. Chappetti was at our chapter meeting in Tohachi. He made a lot of verbal commitments at this meeting. And in one of them, he did promise he would get streetlights right in Tohachi. In that, um, intersection there. We have a road construction going on now, we really, really need those streetlights. We haven't heard anything back to our community. I'm gonna share a short story with you as board members. In 1974, I started my first employment at Chuska boarding school. We were an accredited school at the time, I was fresh out of college. We had a Navajo principal. And our teacher supervisor at the time's name was Paula Garcia. I know a lot of you know her, she retired here at the district office. At this one time, halfway through school, we had this one Texan teacher, young, out of college, was proud to be on the reservation. She was down the hallway making comments, quote, she says, "Oh, these Navajo students, all they do is talk Navajo, 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 it's so disgusting." The principal heard her. He stuck his head down the hall, out of the teacher lounge, and he said, "Sharon, we mastered your language, try ours." Before the school semester was even over, she left Tohachi. Sunshine Martin, sitting right here, most of you know her. Is the Gallup Independent here? You're the Gallup Independent? Quote me on this. Sunshine Martin is our voice for Cougar Country. Cougar Country is the home of our great Chief Manuelito. I'm his seventh generation. Sunshine speaks for the whole Navajo students throughout Gallup McKinley County School. Everything I shared here tonight, Gallup Independent, is paid for by Doris Espinalli, and I own it. Mr. Nez, Mr. President, please bring back harmony among our students, among staff, among the city of Gallup and the native people. There's a lot of, lot of nasty racism we're called, we're called all kinds of names on Facebook by the city of Gallup. Public information, Facebook, comments are made by our superintendent. That needs to be stopped, that needs to be corrected. I didn't see no rebuttal on his Facebook correcting these individual, calling us a bunch of circus monkeys, racism. That needs to stop, that must stop, and only you, Mr. President, need to stop it. So with this, Mr. Nez, no more telling us, please, no more telling us, you start showing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spinalli. Our next public speaker is Andrea Thomas.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Mr. Chappetti. I would like to ask everyone to move forward, concentrate on what you are here for, and that it's our children and their education. I would like to thank the people that have been here supporting the board, especially those individuals for being respectful at the last meeting. I remember the meeting when the superintendent was put on leave, and the crowd was very disrespectful, and things almost got violent. Because of that, I have to leave my 13-year-old daughter home, who has been coming to these meetings with me, asking questions about the school board, about the superintendent, even about the crowd. And she was listening to people arguing, cussing. That is not what I had brought her here for. Now she has a whole different picture of these meetings and what everyone in the audience comes for. Let's change this, move forward, and again, leave political stuff out. Gallup McKinley County School should not be about politics, but about education, children, and most important, respect. Respect those of us who speak up, our children are watching and listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Our next speaker, we have Salata Jim Martin.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent and the audience. She is Salata Jim Martin in Asia, I'm also known as Sunshine Martin, as referred to by Doris. Yeah, thank you Doris for those words. My elders and my community always holds me accountable for speaking and standing up for our students and our community members. And I always know they're watching me, I always know that they are making sure that I am bringing the message that needs to be heard. With that, I would like to begin by extending my concerns and well wishes for our school board member, Priscilla Manuelito, who just took a fall a while ago outside on some ice and had to be taken to the hospital to get her foot checked. And I would like to ask everyone to send well wishes to her and support. I know that she always makes these school board meetings a priority. Ever since I worked with her on the Indian Education Committee as a co-officer, her and I have been very close at advocating for our children, our school district, and our community leaders. So, my heart is heavy and concerned that she's not here this evening and that she has to go through some pain like that this evening. I would like to just share my comments this evening that I believe that we need to call on community members to please get the facts about the allegations against Priscilla Manuelito, as well as allegations against Titus Nez. I believe that people need to be informed out there and not listen to hearsay and gossip, and make sure that when they do get information about school board members, that they do get the facts directly from those school board members. So, please support Priscilla Manuelito, please support Titus Nez. And with that, I just want to conclude and let you all know that out in Tohachi, we do not have a lot of support in our schools. And so as a parent, what I do is I take initiative and I find resources to support and supplement my children's education. We have to do that out there because we don't get support from central office, not like the rest of the schools do, that's a fact. So, tonight, my daughter will be recognized, and I want you all to know that she's, she gets the, got the opportunity she had to go to Washington DC because as a parent, I advocated for my child and I supported her in her ambitions. And I wish we did have more parents who did that, but I wish that the school district supported us more out there in the rural schools.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Martin. We'll continue on now to our next speaker, Ruby Haley.
Yat e shetwurich'i nshloshi bashashch'in tach'i ni dashach'ch'erot okedash'hanale. Yat e aded anaiso tani'i gi, Mr. President, Mr. Nez, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Hineman, Mr. Chappetti, and Joe. The audience over here, I'm coming in front of you as a parent and also as an IEC member that's concerned. I have been visiting the schools out at Navajo, and they have told me that they have got small tablets, 60 of them, that the students could use, and they have made a ticket for technology to come out and re-image and update these computers. They also have computer labs that need updating, and the students are not able to use this because they freeze up on them. Okay, I know it's out in the outlaying areas and possibly something could be done, but during our IEC negotiations, we asked the Navajo Nation to help us, help our students with technology due to the needs assessment that was done physical year 2014, 2015. Mr. Chappetti said he already had ear tag funds for technology, and so that was marked out of our components. Navajo has no current technology in the rooms, so what I want to know is when are we going to get that in our rooms, in the rooms out there, also in Crompoint? I think a lot of the Gallup area don't understand that Navajo, Tohachi, Crompoint, Sayagai, Rema is part of Gallup McKinley County School District. Yes, it's on the Navajo reservation, yes, Navajos go to school there along with other students of different nationalities. So I just want to make that clear that we do need this technology out there and we do need the updates out there so that our Navajo students and our other students can succeed, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Our final speaker this evening, we have Bobby Martin.
Good evening, board members. Um, I'm a concerned parent from three different schools in the district. First is Twin Lakes Elementary School, the next is Tohachi Middle School, and also Tohachi High School. The first thing I want to bring up is the, my concern of the bus situation. Three years ago, an initiative by Chappetti and the Transportation Department stopped school buses from coming down our roads. The reason for them being was the bridges were unsafe. They went into this not thinking ahead, not to get into the future, because here we are, three years later, and still nothing has been done about the situation. I went to an Indian Affairs Committee meeting three or four months ago, and I was appalled to hear the Transportation Department from the Gallup McKinley School District telling our senators, our leaders, "Oh yeah, everything's been taken care of." When yet, it hasn't been. So after it was over, I spoke to two of the legislators and I explained to them Band-Aid fixes have been done for the situation, for the bare minimum. We have high school students who now have a small bus that'll come down, pick them up, take them back out, and if the buses are overloaded, which they usually are, they have to set out over by the church down on Tofugai Road and have to wait 15, 20 minutes, sometimes even longer, for another bus to come pick them up. Number one, I don't think that's safe, number two, it's winter time, it's gonna be a lot colder out there. That has been taken care of. The second thing is, and I think is even more important, is our younger kids. The elementary school students do not have a bus that'll come down and pick them up. They'll have a bus that comes down a portion of the way, and parents have to take their kids out there, and then at 3:15, the bus will come back down, same place, and will take the kids only so far. It seems to me that if anything, these younger kids should be the ones more taken care of because they can't look after themselves. Parents work for living, three years later, nothing still has been done about it, and lies are being told to our leaders, telling them everything's all situated and everything's good. When's something gonna be done about this? We keep hearing smaller buses are coming in, we were told that the Indian Affairs Committee that they got funding for the roads now and bridges and everything will be taken care of. And then I find out a couple weeks ago that this is gonna be done in phases, so the only parts that are gonna be done are the roads, bridges still won't be addressed. So how many more years are we gonna have to deal with our children not being able to get a safe school bus ride home or picked up in the morning? Uh, that's my first concern. My second concern is a little more, a little more personal, to the point where it's gotten me pretty enraged. The other night, my family and I, actually two nights, my family and I were having dinner with one of the board members who was also a family member, Ms. Manuelito. And we're seeing these people, right now I'm saying people, but they're sneaking around taking pictures of us. Very, very disrespectful. As a matter of fact, it's even illegal. We have been able to find out the names of one of these persons who is an employee of the school district. We don't know whether they were told to go and do this, we don't know what reasons, I'm sure I can guess, but I think the school board seriously needs to put their foot down on this. Nobody from the school district should be doing that. This is a teacher that was doing this, we've got the name, we've even got a picture of him taking pictures of us. As far as I know, once I get more information on this gentleman, I'm gonna press charges against this person. And I'm sure he wasn't the only one involved, I'm sure it's gonna go further up the line, so once we find that out, more charges will be filed. I just want to make sure that the board's aware of that, that this is happening, and you need to put your foot down on it. Should not be allowed, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. That concludes our public comments this evening, we'll continue on now to the approval of minutes. We do have the November 2nd, 2015 special meeting, as well as the November 20, November 2nd, 2015 regular meeting. Board members? Motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve, is it both of you minutes or? Okay, motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve the special meeting and regular meeting both held on November 2nd, 2015. Roll call?
Mr. Hineman?
Yes.
Mr. Manini?
Yes?
Mr. Nez?
Yes. With that, board members, I do have the approval of consent agenda items on the table as well again. Board members? Mr. Hineman? We're on the approval of consent agenda item, Mr. Mitchell had combined. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. President?
Mr. Manini?
Yes, I'd like to know that the consent, did the items be approved as presented?
Uh, there's a motion by Mr. Manini to approve the consent agenda items, roll call please.
Mr. Hineman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Uh, with that, we'll continue on now to the superintendent's report. With that, we'll continue on now to the superintendent's report.
We have one student recognition, Shandine Martin.
At this time, I would like to first say that I did ask for this recognition for Ms. Martin, who is a student at Tohachi High School, and she attended the 7th Annual 2015 White House Tribal Nations Conference in Washington DC. I was, I'm very proud of this young lady, who I was looking over a letter that she received from Barack Obama, acknowledging her to attend this conference. So I think at this time, I would like to present her with her certificate recognition. I'm very proud of our students in Gallup McKinley County, always so proud when I hear of students who've accomplished things and are out there to advocate on behalf of Gallup McKinley County Schools as well as the Navajo Nation. And I would like to also ask that maybe she can give a presentation to the board on her trip and what she learned. Well, here's a certificate recognition.
Yat e shetwurich'i nshnol she, bashashchin tohachi ni dashachey do'tuwa e dashanale. Good evening, school board members. So I was selected as a youth delegate for the 7th Annual Tribal Nations Conference. So this was a three-day conference on Wednesday, November 4th, Thursday, November 5th, and that was it. And then we arrived on Tuesday. So on Wednesday, it was early registration at the Ronald Reagan Building in the amphitheater, and then it was also our pre-conference, talking about our breakout sessions. And in those breakout sessions, they had us choose between protecting and advancing nation-to-nation relations or tribal sovereignty, self-governance, and self-determination, strengthening tribal economies, Access to Healthcare and Affordable Care Act, international affairs, and restoring tribal homelands. So those are just some of the choices we had. And so Thursday, November 5th, the conference started at 8:30 for registration, and we had a morning plenary session with speakers such as Valerie Jarrett, the senior advisor to President Barack Obama, and Secretary Sally Jewell, Chairman Aaron Pament, and then Rory Taylor, who was also another youth, Gen I ambassador, and then Deputy Secretary Heather Higginbottom. And so after we had our plenary session, we had our cabinet town halls. In those town halls, we got to meet with our secretaries and deputy secretary. So the one I went to was with Secretary Julian Castro, and that really caught my attention because it was about Department of Housing and Urban Development. In this session, I talked about how we have trouble, or how I have trouble with transportation to housing and to my school, which is usually, it's pretty hard from where I live, straight off the reservation. So I brought that up to them, and when I told them this, they were pretty surprised because they didn't expect how hard it was to live straight off the rez and trying to go to school round trip every day. So after our cabinet town halls, we had our breakout sessions from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM. And the breakout session that I attended was the food sovereignty, and that's, or the nation-to-nations relations, and that's where I talked about food sovereignty. Because here in Tohachi is a place where we don't really have our rights for food, such as like, especially towards the youth. It's a big issue there. So after those breakout sessions, we had our closing session. And then our next day, we all, the next day, we had, we talked with President Barack Obama, and that was at the end, after we talked with Sally Jewell, Deputy Attorney General Sally Kuliene, and Deputy Secretary John King. So they just gave us advice on how we can make changes in our community, and that really inspired me a lot, to do a lot for my community. So I have now created a Gen I project called Side by Side, which strengthens the relations between native youth siblings. And so that is the main thing that I'd like to say. Thank you. And I'd like to also do one more thing, is say, I really want to thank for all those who supported me on this trip. It was a really great experience, and I know that I'm going to bring a lot of that knowledge that I learned out there to here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue on now to our board report, and we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Hideman.
Thank you. I do have four items to mention in my report. I did attend an event at the Public Library, which I want to mention because our library in town, the Tavia Feller Library, has done a tremendous job this month of setting up events to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. And I went to the event by, it was a presentation by Jean White Horse, who's a, actually a well-known librarian. There are such things. But she spoke on the history of her experience, going back to when she was part of the Alcatraz occupation, and things that came out of that up until more recent activities with the American Indian Movement and so on. It was very informative. And I want to share with the board copies of the very impressive program that the library has put out. And I mention that because I've been impressed with the library's attention to Hispanic Heritage Month and also Native American Month, and I'm not seeing the same from our school district. I'm very pleased to see the handout or the copy here of the Mi'amara High School schedule for this week, Native American Week, activities each day. I'm glad to see that. I'm sure there are other things happening out there that we're just not hearing about, but I think we need to make those more visible as part of recognition and celebration and promotion of those things. And so that's why I wanted to make a point out of the library's good effort. I appreciate that. The, I was on Veterans Day, this room was, I won't say full, but there were a lot of teachers in this room working on pacing guide, and also in the room in the back, I think totally there were probably thirty to forty teachers. They get paid for that, but it's work. And they were diligently at working on those curriculum activities where you align out the curriculum to fulfill the state requirements under Common Core. And so I was able to, again, observe how they're approaching that. I was at a committee meeting in this room this week of the Wellness Committee. Eric Schuster's coordinator, chairman of, very impressive meeting because, first of all, the members of the committee represent not only different aspects, operations in our district, teachers, principals, counselors, PE teachers, and so on, but also people from different sectors of our community representing state and community health efforts. And I can't begin to go into the topics they put with it, except it's much more than just physical health. They talk about mental health, wellness, suicide prevention, a whole range of things that does the two. Really broad, total health and wellness, so I think they were really on it. And then today, I participated in another new member online training session that the State School Board gives for sponsors of this so often. And this happened to be upon use of attorneys.
Thank you, Mr. Hideman. Mr. Mitchell?
I just want to report that on November 10th, that I did attend the Indian Affairs Transportation Meeting in Santa Fe, along with Board Member Priscilla Manulito, Mr. Jeff Bond, and Carmen Moffett. And I just would like to say that, you know, I was very pleased with how Mr. Bond was able to give a report on our transportation here at McKinley County, and really letting the legislators know just what kind of road conditions we do have. I was really pleased that they were, I guess, like, we were addressed earlier during, you know, they weren't aware of it. I mean, and these legislators and senators were very surprised to hear from Mr. Bond, the conditions, and even our bus, our bus conditions. You know, we have these old buses that come to find out that we have to have for eleven years before we're able to get new ones. But what they don't realize is that within these eleven years, living in these rural communities, that these buses travel a great many miles. So when you go eleven years and put the mileage on these buses, you know, it's very unfair that we have to wait that many years. Come to find out that we do have a lot of buses that are not even running because we can't afford to have them fixed. Just because a lot of these old buses, they could be eleven years old, and it would cost more to fix these buses than they're actually worth. So with that, I'm really hoping that our legislators and senators can help us in these areas, especially in the rural communities where their buses have to travel a lot longer distances and on the roads and conditions that they have to travel on. We also talked
And we had a good time out there with the community members of Public Pentado. And I did attend the veterans' activity over in Church Rock. We did volunteer and cooked the meal for the veterans, as usual, we do every year. And I did visit with some of my elders out in the eastern part of Navajo. They were kind of upset of what they saw on the newspaper, but they did say, "Keep strong", so they, they said that the support of the board is still what they have. So they are concerned. Some said they were going to attend tonight, but the roads out into Crown Point and Public Pentado, I was told wasn't passable about six o'clock. So hopefully, in the next board meeting, they'll be here. One thing they recommend, though, was possibly hosting upcoming board meetings out in Crown Point, even in Saigai High School. They do want to express their concerns, but because of the distant drive and the time we have our meetings, they cannot attend meetings at those times. Also, on another note, on the 18th, there is a scrimmage game. The Tohachi Cougars are going to be playing Wind Rock Scouts in Forty Fines at the Bejotzi Stadium. So as you know, Wind Rock, I did attend Wind Rock in the Fight School District most of my childhood life, so I want to see that game and support our Cougars out there. So if you guys have time, Tohachi residents. I'm not sure, I just saw their schedule, but I will get the time and I'll go ahead and have a follow-up on that. But hopefully, we can go out there and support our local basketball team out in Forty Fines. That's what I have from my end. Mr. Menini, have any updates?
I have none at this time. Thank you very much for asking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Menini. With that, I believe we don't have any school site reports. Any education committee, JOM report?
Monica was supposed to come in with her report so that I could give it to you, however she lives in South Dakota, and they're having problems with technology.
Please have a seat, Captain.
Okay. So my IEC report this evening, I want to let you know that we have been having our regular meetings, our regular monthly meeting. Our topics of discussion have been the youth conference, the Navajo Language Culture Festival in the spring, and the need to start working on our new needs assessment for school year 2016 and 17, so that we can start working on our new application after the new year. As of September 18th, I believe Ms. Johnson has posted the funds to the school sites about a couple of weeks ago. And I do want to let you board members know at this time that all of our youth conferences have been canceled. We had five youth conferences scheduled before the Thanksgiving break. So because of our students thinking about suicide and doing things that are out of the ordinary, and those were topics that we were going to address, and we have been having meetings for the past two months, and every time we have a meeting, we have asked Ms. Johnson, "Is this going okay? Are these papers going through?", and with no response from her. And then Thursday, she emailed us and told us that they were all canceled with no prior approval from Monica, the president of IEC, and with no notification of any of the other officers. She did point out to us that the reason why she was canceling them is because of 25 CFR 273-13 and 32, which deals with non-native students, non-registered native students. And we tried to explain to her that we do have a de minimis policy in place which covers those students, those few students that want to attend our events. And even then, we were told that they have been canceled until further notice. So now we have to schedule another meeting to discuss that and see what else we need to do. Again, the events we were talking about were in the outlaying areas as well as in the Gallup area, which would have been at Chief Manulito. And it's for the mid-school and the high school students. And we were looking at fifty students from each school to try and get them to attend. And the reason why we were going to the schools, to the outlaying areas, is because of the participation. We figured there would be more participation if we went out to the outlaying areas instead of staying just in town and trying to get all the students in town. And then all the Native Heritage events that were going on, I don't believe that they were all supported. And the schools have been contacting IEC members, saying that the JOM coordinator is returning all the paperwork, saying that it's insufficient. And in the past, we have submitted paperwork and they have been processed successfully, and we were told that there was no findings in our audit, but yet now we're told there is findings in our audit. And so our president is looking into that at this time right now. And then the other thing I wanted to say is I apologize to Mr. Menini because our JOM coordinator has not gotten our schedule out for the meetings yet for this school year. But I do want to let you know that our meetings take place on Saturday, the second Saturday of each month, at nine o'clock here in the boardroom unless otherwise noted. And our budget meetings are on Tuesday before the regular IEC meeting at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And that's what I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. I just wanted to reiterate something on that. Unfortunately, we don't have our JOM coordinator here this evening. I do know that the Johnson O'Malley Program is supposed to work hand-in-hand with the Indian Education Committee. And I saw you cite that CFR, I don't know if we can get a copy to the JOM coordinator. There's two main requirements under the JOM Act. To assure apparent participation and control. The requirements are the Indian Education Committee and the education plan. And I was hoping Ms. Johnson would have been here this evening to see if she could have the education plan here for us to look at. And to hopes that, with the concerns you brought up, that you can work hand-in-hand together. I know I was going to attend the event in Saigai on Friday, but it was canceled, so I'm lucky it was a last-minute thing, but I didn't go that morning, but I went that evening to the event out there. But I hope we can find something that we can work with with us, the superintendent as well as the JOM and the Indian Education Committee.
the Indian Education Committee. And hopefully we can all sit down and maybe go line by line, word by word, on CFR and see that both the JOM and the IEC have to work together on this. So I, and it, it kind of frustrates me that this is going on in, in the middle of the month, that this is Native American Month. And, you know, it's something that us as Native Americans should take pride in as Native American Month. And it saddens me that a lot of these activities are not working out. I do have a flyer here from my Mirra High School, but basically, I know when I was in high school, we used to have like sheep butchering or different activities, that something that this should have happened. But instead, we're neglecting our Native American children. We're neglecting them and saying that because of the bureaucracy, we are unable to show them and experience the culture that we have. And I do know that the funding we have from JOM is supposed to use for its purpose. So I hope in, in the next meeting, when we have Ms. Johnson here, we can sit down with her or talk to her at the same time. And maybe, I don't know if she knows the purpose of JOM or IEC, I'm not sure. But at that time, I would hope she would have something for us to work with, too. Hopefully, none of this kind of thing happens further down the road, because Native American Heritage Month is something that I, I take pride in myself. Because I, I do like, I am a traditional practitioner, and I do take my time, and I do respect what we have in, in our earth here, our mother earth. So it's something that I, I see that is, we should push. And who knows, maybe even after Thanksgiving, we can still host activities for our students, something that we, it shouldn't just be that set-time date, we should do it, you know, November and say, "This is the Native American Month." So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Henneman?
Ms. Haley, I have one question, please. I want to make sure I understood what you said about, if I understood right. It was canceled on the basis that there would be non-native students participating in the event, is that correct?
That's what was given to us. She quoted two seventy-three thirteen and thirty-two, which deals with non-native, non-registered native students.
Because historically, unless something's changed, JOM-sponsored and funded events could include non-native students as long as their presence did not dilute the experience and services to the native students. So I hope we can get that worked out to test to build the case that-
Yes, and we tried to explain to her that's the reason why we have the de minimis policy. That covers the students that are not registered and the students that are not native. And it's just a handful of them. It's not the whole school. So we didn't understand it either.
If we're showing a Native American film for Native American, and the native students are here and we have a hundred other people watching, it doesn't take away from the native students seeing us. I mean, that, that's always been the practice over the years of JOM, so I hope we can get it worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, Ms. Haley.
If we could, you know, I would like to maybe get a time on the Miami Mirra High School pageant that they're having. I would maybe want to attend. There's a date-to-date and, and no time, so, thank you.
Okay, with that, we continue on now to our notices and communication. November twenty-third to twenty-seventh is Thanksgiving break. December fourth and fifth, the school board will be attending a New Mexico School Board Association Annual Convention in Albuquerque. I believe we'll have a public notice out on that. December seventh, two thousand fifteen, Pearl Harbor Day, we will be having our next Board of Education meeting. December twenty-first, we have our next, following Board of Education meeting. December twenty-first to July first, two thousand sixteen, or January, I'm sorry, January first, two thousand sixteen, would have been a long vacation for all of us, but January first, two thousand sixteen, winter break. So these are some of the upcoming announcements and reminders. With that, we have only one item for discussion on this evening's board agenda, the Gallup McKinley County School Board Goals. And I would like to go ahead and give the floor over to Mr. Henneman to start us off.
Thank you, Mr. News, Mr. President. In our packet, the summary for this board goals discussion identifies four items that were mentioned in the previous board meeting and in the agenda for that meeting. And I'll just read them so everybody's reminded of what they include. First one is establishing board goals and study topics. In a general way, I think we each individually have our hopes of contributing to strengthening the education of our students, but we've not articulated any specific goals, say, for the year, or even longer term, or shorter term. The second item is district student disaggregated scores on state tests, a longstanding phenomenon and concern about the low scores of majority of our students. The whole state of New Mexico's score is fairly low, but that's, that doesn't take us off the hook, doesn't resolve our concerns. And again, something I always want to clarify, I don't think we should measure our students totally on the basis of state standardized tests and all high-stakes testing. There are a lot of other dimensions to learning and life, but still, those scores do tell us something in terms of how effective we are compared to what we'd like to do and what we'd like, how our students achieve. The third item is conducting open public forums on GMCS operations, needs, and goals. In other words, how, how can we approach thinking about this as a board, and how can we approach thinking about this with our constituents, with parents, teachers, students even? The idea of maybe having some open forums, and I think I mentioned last time, sometimes teachers don't feel free to say what they're thinking, because they've got to go through the chain of command. They might be inhibited by a principle or, or just their expectations that they're not supposed to speak of. So if we had some open forums where everybody could share ideas and comparisons and just communicate together. And the fourth one is our role and responsibility as a board in supporting revitalization of Navajo and other languages. And again, I say that, you know, I don't think Western education is evil. I've benefited from it. I appreciate what I've gotten. And I've been in school on one side of the desk or the other all my life. So there are a lot of good things. But I have to say, institutionally and historically, it's the schools more than any other institution that have probably undermined and caused the loss of native language and some other languages and our various heritages. And so I think we have a responsibility to think about our role in helping to re-strengthen, revitalize Navajo language and maybe other languages in our community. So the question to me is just how can we do this outside of our, we take one item at a time in our board meeting. If we have some public forums, can we have some work sessions as a board, which are still open public meetings, but where we can simply address in a more open way and a more thorough way some of these kinds of items and see if we can kind of, as people are pointing out to us, move forward in terms of strengthening our own school operations, not just operationally, but the real, the real educational impact, which comes through all those technical aspects that the teachers were working on and that this room is pacing out. But somewhere, there's another dynamic, and that's all of us, including the board, the school, the personnel, the parents getting excited about the possibilities. Because I think Gallup District does not have a proud history overall when it comes to student achievement. We've got some great exceptions. We've got some bright students who are way up there. And we saw an example this evening. Yeah, that's great. There's a whole lot of numbers out there. And we need to bring those up more. And that, that, I guess, needs, we say, parent support, parent involvement, those are phrases. But we need to parent excitement about the possibilities if we're working together. We need to generate that from our end, to let people know we really want to see their ideas and we want to do some things. And we've got teachers who are working hard and staff working hard, but we're not all in the same basket. Somehow, we've got to, I think, see if we can just contribute some more leadership and support. And I don't have a magic answer, other than opening up the communications within ourselves and some, some easier arrangements that we set up here. And then also with the community and the parents and so on. I mean, that's my spiel. That's my name. So I don't have the board, but I have to, just to follow through the, yeah, meetings or public work sessions or public forums or whatever stuff, what your thinking is.
Thank you, Mr. Henneman. I think, you know, we're going the right direction with this in terms of board goals. However, you know, I, I think we, you know, we should sit down with our parent advisory committees, students, all in our designated schools, and then come back to, come back to the boardroom and sort of exchange ideas, the different diversity out. And, you know, schools, as you know, each student or parent, teacher, they all have different goals and ideas, and sort of interpret and bring that together and make, make our board goals and initiatives. By having the board goals, you know, I think, you know, we can stand and say, "This is where we want to be in the coming months, in the coming years." I wouldn't say like five, ten years, because if you do something, I, I specialize in planning. And when you plan something more than five, ten years, eventually, one, two, three years down the road, if you think, "Why am I planning five, ten years ahead?" But if you keep your goal to a minimum of like one, two, three years, you want to see that performance measure on those objectives, you know. And when you do that, you know that, you know, you have succeeded in prioritizing your goals. So I, I, I put this on the agenda, because I feel that as a board, we all have different ideas. And I, I like where Mr. Henneman had started the process. So hopefully, in the coming meetings, we can go ahead and further this initiative with the, with the board goals and bring our ideas to the table and maybe even host little meetings sporadically throughout the district. So I, I certainly favor this. And I, I don't know if any of our board members have any other discussion of this, Mr. Mitchell?
You know, I think that, you know, coming together as a board and getting our goals down, where we want to try and work to make sure that our district is moving in the right, the right direction. I think that, you know, I, the best way to start would probably be with work sessions. That way, we can be able to discuss things that we feel that are important and where we might want to start with. And then, from there, take it on out into our communities. I did, last month, have a parent forum, forum in Tohachi. And I, we had somebody there from Transportation. We had all our principals get up and speak from Twin Lakes, Tohachi Elementary, Mid-School, and High School. I am planning to continue this and have another parent forum and bring, bring in different areas from Central Office, from our administration, to get out there and to be able to communicate and, and to answer questions that our communities have. And with that, you know, as soon as I know that this is, this is where I want it to be, I will start going out to my other schools, which would be like Navajo, and then Che dodg. So, but I think that we really need to start working on these. I know it's going to probably take some time, and it's not something that we, we're going to be able to rush into and try to fit it all in and get everything going at once. I think we need to take it one step at a time. And I'm pretty sure we will be able to come out successful on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Manini, you have anything to discuss on this item?
I have no comment at this time, but I am thinking about our goals and I'll hopefully get back if y'all leave you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manini. Mr. Henneman?
I would like us to attempt at least an initial work session, whether we call it a work session or a forum, but it's still going to be an open meeting, where we can thrash around, if that's sort of a poor phrase, but think intelligently, it sounds better. But share ideas and identify some concrete things, because I'm talking the abstract when I make the comments I made. And if we can start to identify some specifics as goals and also some specific strategies to, to work on and to also get some input from the administration and staff on what they see as ways to proceed. But I think we have to start somewhere with our feet on the ground. And I think that would be, even if it were just a good hour session, if we could pick a date or if we can agree to, to identify a date, as we communicate after this meeting and find a date. Because, you know, there's concern sometimes about board members not communicating between meetings, which I don't even get to. I mean, I could. But one of the things the board, as I understand it, may communicate about between meetings is finding a date for a meeting. And that is not against the rules. And if we don't have a date set tonight, or maybe we can pick a date and project a date, see if we can, whether we want to do it earlier during a day of a board meeting, a separate date. I'm probably the most flexible overall, because I'm not employed, even though I'm busy. So, but it depends on the rest of you.
I think, you know, like you said, to jumpstart everything, we should start early. First, board meeting December, maybe an hour prior to our board meeting, just have a little discussion along with those in attendance, you know, the different goals that, that they see. And then, you know, in between those times, we do, like Mr. Henneman said, we do spend a lot of our times out representing our schools. And I, I think, you know, I like the idea of hosting a, like a district forum in my area to talk with our parents. A lot of the times, a lot of these elders don't have transportation to get to, to, to the schools, or whether the roads are muddy, I think, you know, I'm more comfortable of sitting down and visiting their homes and listening to them. And I kind of got a general idea on that. And I, I think a good time would be an hour before, or maybe even an hour and a half before the, the board meeting on December seventh. Would that be a good timeframe to just sit down, you know, whether we can discuss the board goals? And maybe at that time, we can bring some of the ideas that we have spoken to, to our constituents in our districts. So, and it gives us time to spend the holiday season with our families. So I, I think it'd be a good time at that time to do that. So we'll, we'll go ahead and say, I don't know if the board is in agreement with that as well, Mr. Manini? December seventh, prior to the school board meeting?
I cannot tell you what my activities are going to be right now, as I'm still in recovery for my ER. So I cannot tell you what I can do and what I can't do until I release.
Okay, actually, we were somewhat scheduling that budget presentation, or, you know, how we said, we, we wanted to learn more about the budget process. So I think we can go ahead and push this board goals into the December twenty-first meeting. So that would definitely give us more than a month to, you know, sit down with principals, teachers, community members, students in our areas, and, you know, bring all the ideas. And maybe even inviting them, they want to present themselves during, at that time. Hopefully, it's not snowing, but, but I, I, I think the twenty-first would be a good time for an hour and a half prior to the board meeting. And with that, we'll walk you down to the future board agenda items. Board members, we'll start with Mr.- Okay, we do have a two-hour delay tomorrow. So tomorrow's school will be starting two hours after. Class will be about ten o'clock. So just a notice to the parents out there, also community members, call family, let them know that Gallup McKinley County School is on a two-hour delay due to road conditions. them know that Gomikin County School is on a two-hour delay due to the road conditions.
Also, a little quick thing, Mr. McFarlane is emailing all of you the itinerary for next week, but the pageant is going to be right around 12:45. 12:45?
Yes, sir.
So that would be on Friday, the 20th, 12:45. Okay, with that, we'll continue now to our future board agenda items. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Henneman.
Mr. President, fellow members of the board, I'd ask your indulgence on this item. I have a list. Now, what we've done in the past is sometimes identify future agenda items during this time, or we send them in to the superintendent to be placed on the agenda, and that's legitimate in terms of the procedure. But I think we need to formalize some of these this time and have some structure to this, and so you may rule me out of order at any point. But first of all, in our agenda these past number of meetings, we have this item called recognition, and tonight, we had a beautiful recognition. I read in the paper that, I think, one, two, three of our cross-country runners from Miyamura, one, the first, second, whatever, in the state, that came too late, probably even be on our agenda. But what I'm getting at is, there must be enough things in our district with our size and our number of schools to recognize every meeting and also the same on the school site reports. It's not easy as a board member to have a full sense of what's going on at all the schools we have. So I think we need those reports, and those are, should not, those two items should not be looked at as a burden, although they certainly constitute support for the superintendent. But those are an opportunity, I think, for us to, to share, not only with the board, but with the public, to see what, because there are talented students out there and so on, and I'd like to know what's going on, and we've neglected that school site reports as an opportunity. So I would mention those, and then, I don't, what I'd like to try here on those is just to mention those, and trust we don't need a formal motion to make those as directives at this point. Also, in our packets, we regularly get a list of resignations as well as transfers and hiring and so on. I would like to know why people resign after the school year, and know if there's a pattern there. We're large enough, there are going to be some resignations, that, you know, things happen, okay? But I would like to sue, and if we need to make it a formal directive through the superintendent, via the superintendent, to the personnel HR department, to have a report on that, not individuals, not names and all that, but to see what they've tallied as reasons people resign, see if there's any pattern to be aware of. And I'm interested also in the hiring. There seems to be a pattern in our hiring in terms of where we're getting teachers, and I'd like to know where, I'd just like to know where, where are we doing our advertising, our recruiting? Now, this is, this is probably something that's been shared somewhat before my time before, and so maybe that's catch-up on my part, because I know, I'm pretty sure there was a presentation once on recruiting and the Idaho phenomenon. We went quite a ways to seek people there, but. And then, the third presentation by the UVA Shepherd, the three Shepherds, we had two, and we didn't get the third one, and I thought that was going to happen tonight, so I think we still would like to complete that. And then, in a form or formal manner, I would like to move that the, we have a discussion of the school district's organizational chart, which I have, I'm not sure if any of us have it, at the December 7th meeting, a move that we receive an updated, if need be, school district organization's chart, with the names of each employee holding the positions, each position on the chart, and a brief description setting out, there's a job description, brief description setting out the duties and responsibilities of each position or person on the chart. And I think that will help us to see what's going on in certain phases. Okay, that's, that's one. And I'd like to make that a formal motion.
Yeah, make a formal motion.
Well, I think that's up to you, you want to make that. As you're hearing it, I understand.
Open Meetings Act could be allowed, or Meetings Act, or something like that. But if you just tell me what you're wanting, under the future board agenda is number nine, then I've got it.
We can proceed that way, and if we need, then put these itemized, you're saying we should itemize those on the agenda if we're going to vote on these kind of motions, all right?
Or we can just give them to us in a way that's very direct to do.
Well, it says future board agenda items, and I'm giving the board opportunity to make those as motions. If that's not the proper way to proceed, I'm willing to be educated, but I thought that one is pretty substantive or substantial in terms of what's involved, and maybe we should make it an agreed-upon motion, but if we could simply make them in the way we did before, a future agenda request, I'm happy as long as it happens. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Henneman, Mr. Mitchell.
I think we need to, I think we have enough to put on the agenda at this time, and I think that, you know, with what Mr. Henneman has stated, I think we can start with those and start working on those instead of trying to add to what is already requested to be on the agenda and then have things, you know, go on and on and never get on the agenda. So I think we stick with what was said tonight, I think we can get those on and get started with them.
And, Mr. President, forgive me, this one is, I didn't notice my notes to myself here, I want to mention at least one other item when it comes to board goals and possible agenda items. We get public input items mentioned to us, and then it may appear to the public, and sometimes it may be true that, okay, they said it, and now it's gone. I think we need to find a method or an understanding of how we, what do we do with public input items? I mean, sometimes, I'm sure the superintendent will hear it and follow up on his own, sometimes we may inquire later on our own, but I think we need to somehow find a way to be more systematic, so that they don't just get lost and they get followed up on, and if there are genuine concerns, and if there's something that can be done about it in the short range, and sometimes it takes a longer range thing, you know, the things about the buses that have been mentioned and so on may can't do overnight, but they need to be still addressed, and they may be already being addressed. But I think the presenters need to know, you know, that we are paying attention, because we need to pay attention.
Mr. Henneman, thank you for that, and I think that, if I can recall, when we talked with our attorney way back, and we were discussing public comment and concerns, I think that he had mentioned that the way to go about it would be to, if we found anything in these concerns that we found that we needed to actually be looked into, that we could do a directive to the superintendent and have him do, do a follow-up and then report back to the board on it. How we could go about that.
One of the things that I would like to see on the board topics is how we distribute meeting minutes and how other outside entities utilize those minutes, whether it's a public document, or if it's just in general, anyone could mark on it and put their own comments there and let the public see it. One of the things I want to see is whether it's, it's legal or not, or if it's okay to do, because I, I did come across some of our meeting minutes online that had the different tampering with them, different words in it. I guess you would say a rebuttal on those meeting minutes. I don't know whether, if that's legal or not, or I think, you know, this would be something to discuss as well with the board to see, you know, how it's being utilized at that point with public record. The other thing, this is until, you know, something to think about up to December 21st meeting, I want to discuss the budgetary goals for the 2016-2017 school year budget, providing that the superintendent provides board member with a summary budget for the 26th and 2017 school year with estimates, projected revenue and expenses based on current financial assumptions. That's just something that I think we should start discussing even before the process begins, based off of, you know, the current financial assumptions that we have. Also, I wouldn't mention earlier that we would like to have the school budget training on December 7 prior to the meeting. If we can get an outside trainer along with Ms. Hanks to come and do a training on the budget, school budget, and see if we can find an outside trainer as well within the New Mexico School Board Association that we have, we come out here to help us and do a, I guess, a one-on-one on school budget training. With that, I think we do have enough for our superintendent to work with for the next two upcoming meetings. With that, I believe we're now to-
I'd like to have some info, please.
Mr. Menini?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ness. I'd like to have some reports on our new schools, on Catherine A. Miller, on Delnody Elementary, on Jefferson Elementary, on Lincoln Elementary, on Raymond Elementary, and also on Theroux Elementary. We've not heard anything about these, a lot of these schools that are going to be under construction, and I need an update, please.
I received an update today from Mr. Triplehorn, and we will have them on the agenda for the second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Triple.
Okay, with that-
Mr. President?
Mr. Henneman?
I just want to add a comment on the matter of budget training. I believe that the New Mexico School Board Association has several staff members who can train on that, and the only cost, there might be a small cost, but it would be for mileage, there would be not, not like a consultant or training fee, so it would be modest.
I was informed today by Teddy Long that the request from the board had gone to him, and he's bringing me up to speed on it, and he's working on getting a person for the seventh.
Who is that? Who you worked with?
Andy Sanchez.
Well, if he doesn't charge, my, my concern there is he would probably charge for his time to do that, and I don't think we'd need to do that because NIMSA provides that service.
Right, he's looking for somebody, I think he was trying to get very deeply. He was an entire school finance person, very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable of our areas and-
Would that person then charge for?
He charges for Andy to come. So I would, I would let Andy know also the School Board Association, and he was also working with Joe Dean, is what he told me, so if he's working through Joe Dean, it should be a good concern.
So, yeah, so I just want to reemphasize that, you know, we need to make sure we get our Shepherd's report each meeting, we start at that, that's something we requested, and we got two, and then it stops, so I don't want to see that, the stoppage. I think we need to continue and make sure we get those every meeting.
We were, we were planning on it. This was put out before I reinstated, so it's an agenda that I inherited, but we will make sure that the zones continue.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, do I have a invitation, entertainment to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henneman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Mr. Ness?
Yes.
7:33.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Have a safe trip home. Be careful.